Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Guthrie Public Schools Board of Education meeting for Monday, December 9, 2019. Roll call please.
Pearson.
Here.
Plag.
Here.
Bennett Johnson.
Here.
Davis.
Present.
Salee.
Here.
Watts.
Present.
Smudley.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Please stand me and join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegroll, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence before we begin our meeting. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number six, student recognition.
Blake Whimsy is here for the student of the month. Turn it over to Blake.
My sweet Michaela has no idea why she's here tonight. We pulled this off quite well and we're quite proud of ourselves. Michaela Braxton, Mr. Whimsy, do you have a copy?
I do, yeah. So it's interesting because usually they know what's going on here, but you had no idea, huh? All right.
We tricked her into believing that we bring a student from Faber every month because she just had the experience. She's new to the district, so not participated very well.
You'll have to change your story for next time, Mrs. Barrett.
That's right. But she says, Mrs. Barrett, she knows better than to tell everyone else what the gig is. So to Mr. Whimsy, I sense Michaela is new this year at Guthrie. Like most other teens, changing schools and leaving friends are tasks not easily accomplished. Through little fault of her own, Michaela ended up short on credits when she transferred to Guthrie and became part of the crew at Faber Alternative School. Michaela has been with us almost every day since mid-October. Her attendance is impeccable. She is a joy to have in class and an inspiration to her peers. Michaela has completed coursework for six core academic classes in just a little bit over two months. The day after I typed this and submitted it, she completed the seventh class. She's completely done with her first semester of classes in less than two months, and she's already started on her second semester of classes, when many of my other kids would sit there and argue that the second semester has yet to begin, so they shouldn't have to do anything. Michaela has earned three and a half full credits for her graduation. She participates willingly in the extracurricular activities at Faber, working toward elective credits as well. Rarely is she seen without her glowing smile on her face and something beautifully pink adorned on her body. Through all of life's ups and downs, she is willing to take the task head-on. Michaela shows compassion for other students when they are struggling. She is kind and honest and stands tall in stressful situations. Michaela maintains gainful employment in the community and plays youth soccer in her free time. She is a hard-working, dedicated student who should be commended for her accomplishments. (applause). Mr. Whimsy has some stuff.
Great job, Michaela. We're looking for someone who's able to come beyond the classroom where we do these nominations, and so you check a lot of the boxes. So fantastic job. On behalf of Foundation Insurance, we have a typical $60 gift card to Stacy's Place, which is a restaurant here in downtown Guthrie, but we also included a $100 gift card to Target this time. I watch a lot of the girls at Target.
And because she's our pink girl.
Congratulations, Michaela. Yeah, great stuff.
I'd like to ask Justin to join me at the front and see if I can get it out here without falling off, and get Danny Watson up here as well.
Yeah, so each year we get to choose education support, so again, I've decided to choose Guthrie again, and donate $5,000 from Esford from Chevy and around the sport.
The proposed use for this will be to supplement the improvements on the playground at Central Elementary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
She's getting her way through.
Okay, agenda item number eight, comments to the board by citizens registered to speak.
We have none.
Comments to the board by board members.
I'm just going to say a little bit. As many of you know, I did not run for an election, and that was a personal decision to continue on with some other things I do. I'm a CASA volunteer. I help veterans. I help my husband one day a week in his office. And I quilt and self-quilt. I just started a little business of my own, so has absolutely nothing to do with not wanting to be on the school board. I just had to pick and choose a little bit and kind of weigh out. Well, I was spreading myself a little thin, and so I had to just kind of cut back on some. I've loved my eight years. You still have me for four more months, but I love being here and I love the kids. I have what I think will be a very good replacement who will be taking my position when I'm gone. He ran out of post, and I just want to say, I didn't realize how much a board does, how much an administration does, in a school system until I got on the board. And I have just the utmost respect for everybody. It's a hard job. It's a thankless job sometimes for you all, but I appreciate every one of you, and I know you all go above and beyond, and I really do appreciate it. And like I said, I'll still be here for four more months, but the decision was just purely personal, and I hate to say that I'm getting too old, and I kind of had to weigh a little bit what I do more, but that's kind of what it was when you come down to it. So, but I will miss everybody, but I'll keep in touch, and that's all. That's all I'm going to say for now.
Just going to say thank you, Sharon, for your eight years of service.
Thanks.
Because, you know, you're so well-paid for what you do.
I know. I'm going to miss the money.
Yes. Agenda item number nine, superintendent's report.
Segueing from what Sharon said, update on Board of Education filings. As was mentioned earlier, Ms. Watson is elected not to seek reelection for seat number one. Chris Schroeder was the only person to file for that seat. He will be sworn in following the election date, and we will have an election for seat number seven currently held by Mr. Salee, as he will face Bradley Havener. The election will be held on April 7. With regard to Ms. Watson, her service on the board, I will reserve my comments for the March board meeting because I'm not ready to talk about it yet. And the next thing I want to do is announce the site teachers of the year. At Cotterill, third grade teacher Melanie Ball. Charter Oak, third grade teacher Sarah Lawson. Fogarty, first grade teacher Callie Lyons. Central, first grade teacher Carla Pitts. At Guess, sixth grade math teacher Samantha Morgan. The junior high technology engineering teacher Scott Peterman. And at the high school, English teacher Kyrie Hester. And computer applications Tyler Young. And one of the things that I mentioned with some comments about this is I'm very familiar with all of the teachers on this list, and I'm just really happy that I don't have to be a part of picking a winner out of that because they're all truly rock stars on our staff. And so congratulations to all of them, and we will have, Ms. Walters is hard at work on planning the celebration that we'll have in February, and I know that it will be another great event, as it always is. Central Elementary was awarded a TSET grant for $7,500, which should go toward playground improvements. As you saw, we also received a $5,000 contribution from Esford Chevrolet. That's on top of the $25,000 State Farm grant, and so I think that will give us an opportunity to really dress up her playground, similar to what we did at Charter Oak this last year. So congratulations to Central Elementary. I want to talk a little bit about a program that officially started today, even though we had been participating in it for several weeks. It's called Handle with Care, and this started with Logan County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Devereaux, but it also went across to the Guthrie Police Department. And we have, law enforcement in our county are instructed, if they encounter a situation with a student where they've had some type of trauma, in other words, maybe they've come across a domestic situation or a custody situation, and some things that could affect the child the next day at school, the officer will ask the student or the guardian where they go to school. And we have a list of all the schools in the county that are participating. We organized that, and we had a meeting here in this very room to organize all of that. And when the law enforcement officers recognize that, they will simply notify the district, and it will just say Handle with Care. It won't say the particulars of what the child has endured, but we know that there could be reasons beyond the normal scope of what that child sees and their normal classroom participation that could be adverse with their behavior, and so that we can work with that child. And what, the way that is going to basically go, and the mechanism in Guthrie, is we have set up an email box, and the law enforcement officers all have that address, and they will notify us, and we will make sure that it goes to the classroom teacher, the counselor for the building, and the building principal, so that they know to handle that child with care for the next few hours and days. The next item, Mr. Benson has been working with all of our buildings to be ready to roll out in January, an app called Rave, and our administrators have been, we've been talking about it, we've got some training coming, and it will allow, with the use of a smartphone, to immediately locate a problem in the building. We can describe the problem with certain things that you would put in your phone, and depending on the severity of the problem, it will notify law enforcement immediately and know where the problem is. It can go to the extent of even locking down a building based on what a staff member sees. And we are working to, with Guthrie PD and with Logan County Sheriff's Office on this as well, and it uses geofencing in the sense that if you are not on campus, you can't have an effect on that building other than it will, I believe it will still reach out to And we're integrating this with the 911 call center for Logan County also, and this is something that the State Department of Education has purchased statewide for schools, and we wanted to get as quickly as possible, get ourselves set up on this, and so we're hoping that we can have this up and operational by sometime in January. And so just another thing that we're trying to do to make sure that we have safe schools. The winter band concerts Thursday night, this Thursday, the vocal concert is next Tuesday. Both concerts are at 7:00 PM at the temple. And winter break will begin on Saturday, December 23, and school will resume on January 6. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Simpson. Let's see, agenda item number 10, presentation of 2018-2019 site report cards by Ms. Carmen Walters, Executive Director, and Mr. Doug Ogul, Assistant Superintendent.
Sharon, I hope you feel that Chris in the committee meetings needs to bring some goodies to snack box.
I will. I'll let him know.
Dr. Simpson, Board of Education, tonight we're going to go over our 2019 site report cards, and so we will kind of dig into these a little bit. The report card indicators that we get our points from are academic achievement. These are third through eighth grade high schools, a little bit different, and so I'm going to go through each one of those, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. Academic achievement, that's 35 points. The state average was a D when we go through those. Academic growth, each student by the state has a slide that they're expected to grow on each time that they take a test, and reading and math, and so that is worth 30, and so you can see that 65 points is off of academics for the report card. The English language proficiency progress, you have to have a subgroup of 10 or more ELL students, and that is off the WEATA test, and I know Ms. Walters is going to talk a little bit about that with elementary, but we're talking about a small percentage of students, and it affects 15 points of the grade card. And so I know in one of our sites, we have 11, and we had one that just met the 10, and so if you're not tracking those, it can affect your report card. The state average in that category was a C. Chronic absenteeism is 10 points. Remember, that is where students have to be in there 90% of the time. In committee, we talked about that. We had a site that was over 90%, which is what the state requires, and that was still a B. And so we're above what the state requires, and with the bell curve, let's all remind you guys, each one of those, the bell curve, they'll figure out what the state average is, and then there's a bell curve that they set with all that formula. And so overall, the third through eighth grade, it was a C average for the report card. Any questions over that indicator for third through eighth? The high school's a little bit different. Their academic achievement is worth 45 points. Their graduate, state average was a D as well in that. Graduation is 10 points. State average was a D in that. Ron, you asked this question last month about what that percentage is. 83% is the cohort, and that's the students that enter as ninth graders and are supposed to finish on time as a senior. We've been right at that 79%, and so we've been right below that this year. We've dipped a little bit, but that's what that average was, and so I want to get that information to you. The English language proficiency is 15 points for them as well. The state average was a D. If you do not have that, 10 students who meet that category, you just don't get any points for that, and it goes from 90 points down to a 75. Chronic absenteeism is 10 points, just like the elementary and junior high. State was a C. And post-secondary opportunity, which is a little bit different than the elementary and junior high, that's 10 points, and that is those kids that take either concurrent, they go over to career tech, or they take AP classes. And so state average was a C on that, and overall, the state average was a C for the report card indicator for the high school. Any questions about the indicators before we dive into the report card? I want to give that separate, so you understand that before you start looking at grades. And so one of the things I want to kind of give the board, a little bit of heads up in the community, just some numbers from the State Department. There were 230 schools that had a grade increase this year. On the report card, that's 15.7%. There were 493 schools that dropped in letter grade, and that was 33%. And so there was 767 schools that stayed the same for 51.3%.
Those are school sites, not school districts.
Yes, school sites. In total, I would put this on there, but I didn't find it until late. I would have it up here on the slide for you guys. There were 54 As in the state, that is 3.6%. There were 292 Bs at 19.5%. There were 579 Cs, that's 38.8%. There were 458 Ds at 30.7%. And 111 Fs were 7.4% to kind of give you the breakdown, just to show you what that bell curve looked like overall with those report card grades. So we're going to dive into report cards. We'll start with the high school academic achievement. We were D. We kind of talked about that. Was the state average. That's worth 45 points for the high school. Graduation, told you we were down a little bit with that cohort group. We are looking really good right now. We're tracking those. John is doing a great job at Faber with those kids, and so we believe and know that this is an area that will go up. Our English language proficiency, that was a D. We're struggling a little bit helping some of those kids, and so we're looking for different ways to be able to help in that category. Our chronic absenteeism, as you can see right there on that slide, it's hard for me to read those little numbers, but we're right there, close to the state average, and we're a D. And so one thing we're always looking at, trying to improve, is trying to get our students to class. One of the areas I'll brag on, Commissioner Grant on his staff on, is our post-secondary opportunities. We were above the state average in this last year. We had 38% of our students, and I believe, if I can read that right, it's 49%. And so we increased in our post-secondary opportunities for our juniors and seniors. And so that was good. Overall, our grade did drop from a C last year to a D. A lot of that is because of that last month when we gave our grades, we noticed that the state dropped as well, and we did, of course, at Guthrie as well, we followed that. And so that dropped us down because of those 45 points into an overall grade as a D. Here's a 5A report card comp. What I've pulled is these are 32 football-playing 5A schools that played this year. You're not going to have scores for two schools. That's Bishop Kelly and Bishop McGinnis, because they're private. And so what I would say is look over on your right-hand side, I'm going to use this little fancy bullet pointer here, that there's letter grades, and so you can see that there was, this is a 1718, and then right next to it is the 1819 letter grades per all these schools. And so there were zero As in 5A. There were three Bs. There was 15 Cs, 11 Ds, and one F. So if you're looking at that, you want to put it all together, kind of put it together, there's two schools that went up in letter grade. There were 10 that dropped in letter grade, and 18 schools that stayed the same. The junior high academic achievement, they were a C. You can look at that bar graph right there, and you can see that, you know, junior high was above state average in three of the four categories, and they still get a C. That's that bell curve that comes into play. Not that we have to agree with them, but that's what they get. Academic growth, once again, you look, we're right there at the state average. There's a C. English language proficiency progress with the junior high, they did not have this last year. I believe this year there's 12 students, and so I know Mr. Rainwater and his staff are looking at those students and figuring out what we can do to help them be successful and meet what the state requires them to improve on with the WEATA test. Chronic absenteeism, a D. Once again, you can look, we're right there at the state average, and the state average was a C in that category, but we're just a tad below it, and so we got a D in there. And overall, stayed the same as last year. Overall grade was a C.
Mr. Ogul.
Yes.
Just to confirm what I understood in committee, the English language learner children, students also are tested at the same test for the academic achievement and academic growth?
Yeah, they'll still be on those tests that they took there. Does the English language proficiency is just from the WEATA test?
But they are also test.
They count three times.
Yes, they're test, okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know that Travis brought that up in committee.
Yes.
Any questions? Here's our junior high, 5A football comps. There's a few other schools that I couldn't pull just because they're inner-city schools, and I don't, I could not figure out which school went, you know, it's not like I could pull up at, you know, a school and just say, okay, they're tied to that. And so most of the schools I could find, so once again, if you go down on that right-hand side, you can look at 1718, and then where we were at 1819, and where it moved, zero As, four Bs, 14 Cs, seven Ds, and two Fs. So compiling all those numbers, three schools went up in letter grade, five schools dropped in letter grade, and 19 schools stayed the same with the junior high. This year, Susan is blessed to have me, and so I get to go over her report card. Academic achievement, once again, it was a D, just right at the state average. Academic growth was a C. The English language proficiency progress was a D. Chronic absenteeism, a D, which still blows my mind, we keep talking about it because we're right there at the state average, and it's still a D. And overall, was a D, and like I said, for the most of our report cards that we did drop, it's because of that academic achievement portion, because we were at the state average as a D, and, you know, that's either 35 or 45 points of your report card. What I did on these 5A and 6A comparisons, I want to look just at buildings that are comparable, and so that's just fifth and sixth grade. There are elementaries that go, you know, pre-K up to sixth grade. There are some that have sixth, seventh, and eighth, or fourth, fifth, and sixth. And so I found schools that just had fifth and sixth that were football 5A comps. And so if you look over here to the right side, there were zero As, two Bs, five Cs, two Ds, and zero Fs. So three schools went up in letter grade in the fifth and sixth grade. One school's dropped, and five schools stayed the same. Do I have any questions over the secondary report card? Ms. Walters is going to come up and go over the elementary.
Okay, like Ms. Ogul said, I'm going to kind of break down the elementary, and I'm going to be basically focusing on our four neighborhood schools that have our pre-K through fourth grade students. Let's start with Fogarty. Fogarty did a great job, as you can see, they're well above the state average in academic achievement, but yet still a C. The same thing on academic growth, they did get a B in that area. Let's go about the English language proficiency progress. This, when we were talking about, they kind of take it twice. They first get their state testing, okay, starting in third grade, but when they take the WEATA test, that starts in kindergarten, and it's a language proficiency test. And basically, it's listening, speaking, and working on acquiring the English language skills to be proficient at their age and at their grade. And they have so many years to kind of clip out of that based on the growth in their language skills. Before, when we had the initial report cards come out, Fogarty did not have a subgroup in this, and their overall grade was a B. And then a couple of days before the final ones came out, they had found number 10 that made a subgroup on there. And what's a little bit frustrating is that that part of it, those 10 kids, when you look at the points on the 15, that's 17% of the school report card that's based on 10 kids. And so not only are we tracking their school achievement on the state testing starting in third grade, but we're also tracking their English language proficiency. Chronic absenteeism, you can see that for Fogarty, above the state average, that was a B. And then overall, we are above the state average, and it is a C. So questions on anything on Fogarty?
So what are the total possible points?
On this one, shoot in front of me on that one.
If you're going to have 75 for elementary, unless you have the 15 points for the English language, and it would be 90.
Right. So you said there were 17 points for the English language learners, so...
Correct. As far as when they calculate the overall grade, and when you look at the points and how much the percentages are based on points.
What's the student population at Fogarty?
Well, she's not there. I'm thinking she's running around five, what would you say?
I was going with 380.
No, it's about, it's about 450, right in there.
I think you're about right, because she runs a little bit retarded, so probably around in there.
So we're, yeah. So there's certainly oversampling for English language learners. So when 20, over 20% of your possible points are determined by 10 students, have a population of 450.
Correct.
You're certainly skewing the statistics.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Does anyone else have a question on that one? Okay, thank you for pointing it out. I appreciate your time. Okay, let's move on now to Central. So we can see academic achievement was basically a D. Academic growth, the... Academic growth, the little job there is a C. You'll see kind of the NA there. At Central, they did not have 10 kids to make a subgroup. So, this is Travis, where it's going to be on the 75 and not the 90 because of that. So, when we see that, they didn't have 10 kids that were trying to acquire the proficiency language skills. Chronic absenteeism, super close there to meeting that state average, then like a point or two, and then overall for Central, had a final grade of a D. Questions on anything with Central? Okay, let's move on to Cotterill. Cotterill, you can see academic achievement overall is a D. Academic growth is a D. Okay, the same thing with Cotterill. They're based on that 75, they did not have 10 students to be in that subgroup to be tested on the WEATA testing. Kind of proud of Cotterill here, they were higher than the state average in chronic absenteeism. So, that was something that was positive. And then, overall grade for Cotterill is a D. Questions on anything with Cotterill? Okay. Let's talk about Charter Oak. Academic achievement is an F. Academic growth, certainly did a better job there with a C. Okay, let's really focus on the English Language Proficiency progress, where basically that is an F grade. We talked about Fogerty being identified with 10 students. Charter Oak, whenever this first was coming out, had 63-plus and growing. So, you have 63 and growing, and then you have 10 kids. So, we're starting to see a huge increase as far as in that area for Charter Oak, and you have that many more students, almost 60 more students, that are trying to get growth on the WEATA test. And it's a lot harder to move 65 kids, and you have so many years to acquire that versus a smaller amount with 10. And so, this is an area that we're really focusing on and trying to get some additional language skill sets. So, any question on that portion of it? That is probably our highest-growing ELL population, is located at Charter Oak in that elementary area. Chronic absenteeism, so kind of a positive there, has a C. And then, overall grade, you're looking at a D for Charter Oak. Questions on anything with Charter Oak? Okay, let's look at the elementary comps. Like Mr. Ogilvy said, it's hard to find schools that have a comparable grade level, so I had to search high and low on just pre-K through fourth grade building, so we could be kind of comparing apples to apples. And you can go, and you can see our sites up at the top, and see all of our grades that I just went over. And then, there were four schools that were set up in the same configuration located at Western Heights, and you can see, based on that, there were two Fs and two Ds. When you look at, Piedmont had an elementary school with a B, and then Althus had one with an A. So, based on what I can compare it to with similar grade spans, there was one A, one B, one C, five Ds, and two Fs. Questions on any of the comps? Okay, questions on anything overall that I can answer for you or explain, or Mr. Ogilvy and I can jointly explain anything?
Some comments I would offer on this, and I, there is a press release at your seat that I'm going to offer for Guthrie News Leader, Guthrie News Page, Logan County Courier, conclusion of the meeting. Some things to keep in mind, we had a very short timeframe between when the report cards were released last year and this year, because the report cards were released in March. I looked at those, looked those over this afternoon. Some of the things that this highlights, we have a growing ELL population. It's something that we've really sensed that we did, but it's quantified with this data. And as the board knows, with some discussions that we've had in committees, we are working to allocate some resources to assist us with those students. And a lot of the students that we're talking about come to us, especially early childhood, where they cannot read in Spanish or English because they haven't learned to read yet, and there's no one at home that can read in English. And so, that presents a unique challenge to us, that, that we are working toward. One of the, one of the real challenges we've been faced with is just, it's, it's one thing to post a job, as you all know, it's a whole other thing to have a qualified candidate to serve our students. And they're, this is an issue within the entire state, and so those folks are in high Some other things to keep in mind, we have a greater percentage of students receiving special services than the state average. We serve a lot of special needs children in our district. And in many cases, in fact, in most cases, those students are tested with exactly the same test as what a regular ed student will receive. And we have those results put together with our, for our students. I've said for eight years, since we started, my, my arrival in Guthrie coincided with the start of report cards. They've gone through several different versions, several different methods of calculation. One of the things that has not changed is what I will conclude with on their validity, they are a great measure of socioeconomic status of your students. They, they are very good and accurate at that. It's interesting, I saw a cartoon today that said, "Report cards are not about education, they're about politics." And I, I wasn't even going to bring that up, but I saw it today, and I thought, you know, there's, there's a lot of truth in that. The, the other thing that resonated probably the most to me throughout this, these report cards, the presentation that Ms. Walters and Mr. Ogilvy made, is the continual chronic absenteeism challenge that we face in this district. The way the state defines chronic absenteeism, it is, you must be in school 90 percent of the time regardless of the reason that you're gone other than student activity. So, if you are sick, if you are a student that is sick a lot, and then you have something else that happens in your life, in the family's life, that takes you away, you can become a chronic absentee student even though the absences are quote-unquote "excused," and that still counts against our chronic absenteeism. We have worked as a district incredibly hard over the last three years to improve our chronic absenteeism, at least with the students that we felt should be in school and were not in school for reasons that were not excused. And we have worked with the District Attorney's Office, with the City of Guthrie, and Guthrie PD, the municipal court, and with North Care, getting counseling for these families and things such as that to try and get the kids in school. That's not the definition of chronic absenteeism according to the state, but it is a part of that group. And it goes back to, we cannot educate these students if they are not in our classrooms. And so, we will take this as we do every year, and we will utilize what we can find to work on finding things that can help. We will look at possible allocation of resources in certain areas, like we've talked about with ELL, and like we've talked about with class sizes, et cetera. But when I hear that the state went down, and you know, you see a lot of our peer schools that are very similar to us on, on their grades. One of the things that I said in committee that I stand by is, from 2008 until last year, we had a gradual erosion of funding. We did not get here overnight, and we're not going to fix this overnight. And so, I have every confidence in our staff, and from the administration, the building principal, the classroom teachers, that they're doing everything they can every day to help our students. And I think that over time, what we are doing will work, but it will take time.
Carmen, I had a comment for both you and Doug, and I shared my comments in committee meeting. These are my comments, these do not represent the board, they do not represent board members. I do believe that as an education institution, we need to have goals, and I think it's good to utilize these tests, these reports for, as a tool to help us continue to improve. I'm not a fan of this, this program here, I will be the one to say that. However, what people will look at is they'll see these grades, and they take it at face value. And what people don't see is what you guys are doing behind the scenes, how you're collaborating together and working together to transition students from one grade to the next, and from one facility to the next, and the pride that you guys take in that. And so, I want people to know that this is not representative of you. And I just encourage you to use the tool, extrapolate the information that can help you to improve, but don't let it hang around as a weight. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
I'd have to agree with Jennifer. I mean, the board, I know speaking for myself, we're not happy with these numbers either. It's, it's always been a struggle, but at the same time, I see what our administrators are doing, what our teachers are doing. We are very, you are very data-driven. Jennifer talked about goals, I know, I see that. I see some adjustments that we've been making in the last few months as far as professional development, trying to implement these goals, be more strategic. But every student in our district, I see how our administrators track each individual student's progress. We're not just throwing things against the wall to see what sticks. We know how every student's progressing, what their academic achievement level is, so it's a real challenge. And I agree with Mike, I've been on the board long enough to see that a lot of these are demographic challenges, are socioeconomic challenges that we're dealing with, but classroom size I know is a, a big factor in that. So, anyway, while we're not satisfied, or I'm not satisfied, I am confident that the administrators and our principals and our teachers are very intentional about improving on these, and so I want to thank you for the hard work that you put into this.
Okay, agenda item number 11, consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, except for item A, 11A.
Second. Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N.
Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda, item A?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Upstate.
Smedley.
Yes.
Six I's, one extension.
All right, agenda item number 12, business agenda, 12A. Presentation of 2018-2019 audit by Putnam &amp; Company LLC.
We have Jerry Putnam here from our auditing firm. Jerry?
Glad to be here with you tonight to present the fiscal year 18, 19 audit. We always try to provide an executive summary, and we put that on top of your audit report tonight. I thought I'd at least go through that and talk about some of the highlights. Of course, we talk about our report format, and Oklahoma School District audits look a little bit different than other corporate audits, and so we have some qualifying language in here, and I don't want that to cause you any concern, but we just have to say some things in there that were not in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We're not on the accrual basis, we're on the regulatory basis, which is the basis the State Department prefers. So, we try to keep them happy first and foremost, and, and so that's why our report looks a little bit different. But it is consistent with what we've done in the past, and it makes it nice to compare in that manner. The report highlights section, there's some good news there. Our fund balance in the general fund increased about $386,000 over the previous year, and that's so important, and we only have two components that make up our budget, really our carryover and our new revenue. So, that, that gives us a better budget in the general fund. We know our revenue's going to go up, and our, our carryover's up, then that makes for a lot brighter picture. We did go down in the building fund about $33,000, and in the child nutrition fund about $73,000. The fund balance in the bond funds decreased because we had some active bond projects. We spent quite a bit, so we decreased about $5.3 million in the bond funds, but that's normal, that's, that's what happens when you're finishing up bond projects. And so, our overall outstanding bid increased $175,000 even though we had some new bond There's about $485,000 federal dollars that came in after June 30th, so that helps the budget too. All our programs of reimbursement type programs, we have to spend the money first, so getting it back after June 30th and going into this year helps us out quite a bit. We did spend about $2.9 million federal dollars, so that tells us as auditors, we've got more work to do. We, we have to look at federal programs a lot closer when we go over $750,000 in federal expenditures, because we have major federal programs, and the federal government looks over our shoulders a lot closer when we meet that floor of $750,000. We always try to put some management comments in the back of our report, and I'm, gosh, I'm glad that we don't have to give you a great letter grade like the State Department does here.
Go great in terms.
Right, but I think it would be a lot higher than these grades I've been looking at tonight, because we appreciate the job you're doing. We get calls from Dr. Simpson on down the shell at staff members, we appreciate that, because we think it heads off a lot of audit comments when you get to the time we come in and actually do the audit. It's always after the, the fact, but when you ask questions, you know, during the year and give us a chance to weigh in on them, we do appreciate that. I think you can see that from our audit comments, we just got in the appropriated funds, the general fund, billing fund, child nutrition. We just had one situation there that we thought, well, we should have had somebody sign, acknowledge receipt of, you know, or delivery there of goods or services that were purchased. Activity fund, we had one like that, we didn't have any negative sun, fund balances in all the subaccounts. We've got two and a half pages in the audit with all the activity fund subaccounts, a lot of people involved in those accounts, so we're doing a good job with the activity fund there too. I notice we gave away another gift card tonight, that was one of our comments. As auditors, we don't like gift cards too much because we don't have much documentation to support what the-
That doesn't come from the school, that was from the sponsor.
Oh, good. Miss Yell, that might not-
Let me qualify.
Confuse me there, but I, I took a note, a copious note on that, but, but I think that's all I plan to say. I welcome any questions that you might have at this time.
Guys, any questions from Jerry? Thanks, Jerry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to the staff for helping us out too.
And does this, this does not require action, correct? You presented through the-
Except.
Okay, okay.
Okay, agenda item 12B, discussion, consideration, and vote to accept a mineral deed conveying a mineral interest in the, what is that, West Two of the northeast corner, Section 28, T-15 North, R-1W, Logan County, Oklahoma, from Gail K. Gossett, trustee of the Ray S. Gossett Irrevocable Family Trust.
I got an interesting call a while back. There, there was an attorney in Wyoming that had a client that had lots of mineral interests throughout the state of Oklahoma, or within the state of Oklahoma. And the, the, this was a husband and wife, and the husband has passed away, and the, the, uh, it was the wish of the family that they, uh, give the mineral rights of this, that they owned to the school district wherever it was. And, uh, so I, uh, we have a, I got this today, this was, this was not included in your packet, I just finally received this today, the signed copy. This was prepared by our attorneys, it's a mineral deed, and it does require, uh, action on, uh, on your part to accept it. And, uh, but also, um, we were very thankful for the Gossett family, and for them thinking about education in Oklahoma, all the way from Wyoming. So. Do we, do we know a specific amount on the deed? I mean, what, what we're gifted? Um, yeah, it is, it's in that legal description that's in there, but I don't know that I can interpret that. And I do know that it has, um, there have been times that it has been leased with, uh, money producing, it's not currently under lease right now, but it has been under lease at times.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the mineral deed conveying a mineral interest in the west half of the northeast quarter of section 28, T-15 north, R-1 west, Logan County, Oklahoma, from Gail K. Gossett, trustee of the Ray S. Gossett Irrevocable Family Trust.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 12C, recommendation, consideration, and action upon appointment of Bill Hodges, Doug Ogilvy, and Michelle Chapel as designated representatives of the Board of Education to conduct employee negotiations for the 2020-2021 school year.
So an annual item that we bring to the board, um, and historically, uh, the assistant superintendent, along with our chief financial officer and, and Mr. Hodges have been, uh, conveyed that responsibility by the board at this board meeting. Recommend approval.
Madam President, I move, we approve the appointment of Bill Hodges, Doug Ogilvy, and Michelle Chapel as designated representatives of the Board of Education to conduct employee negotiations for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question, is, has there ever been a time that a board member has been part of this, this team?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, is that uncommon for...
Yeah, it's kind of a, yeah.
Yeah, it would be a, I think it would be a conflict, wouldn't it?
It, it, not saying it doesn't go on, but it would be, potentially it could be a, a problem when it comes time to ratify the negotiating agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 12D, recommendation, consideration, and action on agreement with Municipal Finance Services, Inc. for continuing disclosure reporting assistance agreement.
This is an annual renewal of our agreement with Municipal Finance. Mr. Wolf is here, uh, and, uh, there is, there are no changes in considerations for his fees, but, uh, that, if there's questions, Mr. Wolf, he is present, I would recommend approval.
Madam President, I make a motion, we accept the agreement with Municipal Finance Services, Inc. for continuing disclosure reporting assistance agreement.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 12E, recommendation, consideration, and action upon change order number two to Innovative Mechanical LLC on high school HVAC replacement.
This is on page 99 of your board packet, uh, this is, uh, the, the finish-up of the last part of the high school HVAC renovation. Uh, we have, uh, this will come out of the contingency fund that was approved with the contract, and there will be a, that leaves $17,820 in contingency for that project. Recommend approval. Madam President, I move that we approve change order number two to Innovative Mechanical LLC on, on HS, HVAC replacement.
Second. Discussion. Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 13, proposed executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of personnel, FMLA requests, resignation, separation from employment, and transfer of position requests, all as set out on the personnel reports. Discussion of extra duty assignments is listed for 2019-2020. Discussion of employment of temporary contract teachers is listed on Schedule A for the second semester of 2019-2020 school year. Discussion of employment of probationary contract teacher is listed on Schedule B for the second semester of 2019-2020 school year, and periodic annual evaluation in terms of employment of Dr. Michael Simpson, superintendent of schools, disclosure of which information would violate the confidentiality requirements of state and/or federal law, all pursuant to 25 Oklahoma statutes, section 307, B1 and 7.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 13, vote on action set out on the personnel reports.
I move, I move we approve the action set out on the personnel reports.
Second. Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 15, action upon extrading, extra duty assignments for 2019-2020.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the extra duty assignments for 2019-2020.
Second. Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 16, action upon recommendation to employ as temporary teachers for the second semester of 2019-2020 school year, the individuals listed on Schedule A of this agenda.
Madam President, I recommend, I make a motion, we, uh, employ the temporary teach, uh, the temporary teachers for the second semester of 2019-2020 school year, the individual is listed on Schedule A of this agenda.
Second.
Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 17, action upon recommendation to employ as probationary contract teacher for the second semester of 2019-2020 school year, the individual listed on Schedule B of this agenda.
Um, and board members, let me call your attention to Schedule B, that, to be, for clarity, that is a probationary teacher that is moving to a career. And so, uh, want to make sure that, that everyone is clear on that, and I verified the agenda item with our attorney, and he's comfortable with the language that was used based on what the schedule says. Madam President, I move that we approve the recommendation to employ as probationary contract teacher for the second semester of the 2019-2020 school year, the individual listed on Schedule B of this agenda.
Second.
Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Watts.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Seven I, zero N's.
Agenda item 18, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of this agenda.
We have none.
19, discussion of possible action on new business not known about or could not have been known reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Number 20.
Madam President, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call please.
Pearson.
Yes.
Flagg.
Yes.
Bennett Johnson.